Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start our meeting this evening, we will observe a moment of silence in remembrance of the students who lost their lives and all those affected by the tragedy at Oxford High School. So let's just take a minute, please. Thank you. Angela, if you could please read the mission statement?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Thank you. Angela Rocco?
Ms. Michonne?
Here.
Ms. Shuboi is absent with notice, and Mrs. Sutton is absent with notice, and so is Sheri Zubi today. Kyle Simmons? And Mrs. Telta?
I am here.
And I am present. You have a call.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Some moved.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
To approve the consent agenda, item is presented.
Support.
Thank you. Mr. Wonsley? Mr. Wonsley, any discussion? Sorry.
Sure. We have a couple resignations. We have Catherine Garcia, who recently approved her as a specialized paraprofessional a couple meetings ago. She has declined the position based on the information you see in the backup. Also, Emma Leach, a 4th grade teacher at the middle school. She just had a baby and decided to stay home, so she is resigning effective December 16th. We are currently posting for that position, which I believe the posting is up today, so we can start looking at the applications. There is one termination in the backup. This individual just stopped coming to work. And so you see all the backup documentation in there, our communications, et cetera. So we terminated her based on the board policy. New hires, Chase Churchill, freshman boys' basketball. I don't believe Chase is here. Ashley Yi, a specialized paraprofessional. Ashley is here. And Cynthia Russo, lunch supervisor, was also hired. I do want to recognize your board packet, and he is here tonight, Derek Howell. He was a specialized paraprofessional for many, many years. He has moved to the Alternative Education Online Learning Court here, so we are excited to have him for that position. There were no corrections over the 11:22 or the 11:20 regular meeting or the 11:29 special meeting, and I received no questions regarding the claims and accounts.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Wonsley?
Yeah, Brian, the 4th grade teacher, you said you had applicants. I'm assuming there's been a substitute in there while she's been on maternity leave. We will get the same sub there until we...
Yeah, that is our plan. We're trying to keep consistency for the students in that classroom, so until we hire a permanent person. It's one of our COVID-building substitutes.
And are there a lot of applicants? Do you know?
Thank you. Four. I knew of two. I haven't heard any more, so four applicants.
That's my only question, and I just want to toss out, since I said it to Derek when he walked in, I would say publicly in front of the camera, outstanding choice. I was so excited when I saw the paperwork that you were taking on this job at the high school. You're going to be great, and so thank you for doing it. Yes, very excited.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Wonsley, bond update?
We are continuing finishing our punch list. There is, we are still waiting on some cores for doors interior, so they've been working on putting what I call construction cores in doors that are on the inside. Lee Elementary School, new addition for the early childhood lettering went up on the building this past Saturday. The sheet metal or the metal that's going on in the middle school, the old main entrance, as well as the new office, will be going up soon. They actually started today by the new main entrance on the building. So we're just going through the punch list of items to complete them as the materials are coming in. Tonight, you have the approval of the middle school and high school fitness equipment. Just to give you a little background, we sat with, or I sat with Mr. Reinhardt. He pulled together a meeting with coaches and gym teachers a while back to get feedback on what they're looking for for this fitness room. We tried to get everybody's needs in that list. We put it out to bid. And the bid package you have in front of you tonight is what we're asking to replace the equipment that was in the high school. Obviously, the high school fitness room is about four times the size, five times the size of what it used to be, as well as the new middle school facility, which is in the front of the middle school. That will be on your agenda tonight.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is our presentations. We're going to start off with our recognition of the retirement.
We will start with Mrs. Lashbrook and Mrs. Yushar. If you come up and join us, we'd like to recognize you.
Good evening. I am here tonight to honor and congratulate Robin Yushar with her retirement. Robin began her career enrichment in September of 2000. Her 21-year career here was devoted entirely to the students in the Special Education Department at Lee Elementary. Robin has worked with students in the early childhood special ed classroom up to 4th grade over the years. One of Robin's greatest strengths was her ability to determine what each student needed from her. She was able to build relationships with students when others deemed them hard to relate to. She could see past their behavior and understood that each student was trying to communicate with her, and she was able to deliver exactly what they needed. Prior to Richmond, Robin worked in Utica schools for seven years as a paraprofessional, a media center specialist, and a lunchroom supervisor. Robin should be commended for dedicating over 28 years to students in public education. In closing, I would personally like to thank Robin for her dedication to the Special Education Department and the students at Richmond Community Schools. Congratulations, best of luck, and enjoy it.
On behalf of the students, staff, and community of Richmond Community Schools, please accept this brass belt in recognition of your dedication and years of service and the significant contributions you have made to this district. Your kindness and commitment to the students of Richmond Community Schools has positively impacted thousands of lives, and for that, we thank you. And we wish you nothing but health and happiness in your retirement. Congratulations and enjoy it. It's great.
The next one is Karen Montgomery. Karen Montgomery retired this past June, but is unable to be here because she's back subbing as a bus driver. So she is at home, probably sleeping right now for her run in the morning, so the county will recognize her.
Thank you, Brian. Karen retired at the end of the 2021 school year. She started her career as a bus driver with Richmond Community Schools on August 19th, 2008. Working for 13 years as a bus driver for Richmond, the school district became a second family to her. Karen always made the comment, "I love this district and all the support you ever need when dealing with any type of issue." She's been on many bus routes over the years, with her longest being the horse room. She established many tight connections with her families on that route. Karen was also one of our top field trip drivers for many years. She was always willing to pick up a field trip when needed to make sure everything was always covered. Along with field trips, she was also early childhood and special ed driver, PNCOW and AIS driver. During her last year here, she is always willing to pitch in anywhere needed along with doing her regular scheduled runs. Karen is an outstanding employee, reliable, and very dedicated to her job along with her students. She truly loved her kids and would go the extra mile to make sure they were always safe and well taken care of. After making the decision to retire, which wasn't an easy one for her, Karen wanted more flexibility in her schedule. She wanted to have more time with her family along with being able to spend more time in a retirement compound in Florida. She is greatly missed in our department. She brings a special kind of cheerfulness to the room. We are very happy to see her being able to enjoy her retirement. Karen did come back to Southport as a bus driver for us in September, which has helped out tremendously. She is still willing to cover anywhere she is needed. We are truly thankful to have her here when she is available. Thank you, Karen, for many years of dedicated service as a employee to Richmond Schools.
We will get Karen her belt and give her recognition to her. So this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Era and Ms. Manguni to recognize Mr. Koshin. Why not Mr. Koshin?
Good evening, Board of Education. I am here to celebrate the career of Dave Koshin and honor his time spent here at Richmond Community Schools. Dave started his career in the summer of 2016. He was hired as the principal for Lee Elementary and served his entire time in that position. One thing that I will always remember about Mr. Koshin was how great he was with the kids. He could be quite intimidating with his height and sometimes serious demeanor, but his office was fully decorated with letters from the students and pictures he was constantly given. He cared about the staff and the students at Richmond. Was very lucky to have him and serve on the administration team. Mr. Koshin retired over the summer of 2021 and has closed that chapter in the field of education and has been working for a family-owned business, Always Care, living the good life in retirement. I appreciate the work and the relationships that were built for Mr. Koshin. Richmond appreciates your five years of service. And here, Ms. Manguni.
Thank you, Ms. Era. I'm honored to have the opportunity to speak on behalf of Mr. Koshin's recent retirement and the impact he made at Richmond Community Schools. I had the pleasure to work alongside Mr. Koshin as his dean of students at Lee Elementary for five years. Mr. Koshin brought a sense of calmness anytime he were in his presence. His ability to stay the course regardless of the situation was remarkable and something that I and many others looked up to. No matter how hectic some days could be, Mr. Koshin always brought stability to the situation. Staff often laughed and called me the boil and Dave the simmer. I think that would still be true today. The first word I think of when I reflect on Mr. Koshin's character is integrity. If he said he was going to be there, he was there. He did not miss a meeting, a deadline, ever. He was reliable for staff and students every day. After about three or four years of working together, I finally started to beg Dave to take a day off and give me a shot in the big seat, but it was laughable because we both knew that that was not going to happen. Dave was known for rarely missing days of work. So much so that I'll never forget receiving a text from him that he had totaled his truck in an accident all because he was adamant about coming to work on a snow day amidst a snowstorm. And this is just a small example of his dedication and a huge reason why he has missed. I know I speak on behalf of the staff at Lee Elementary that we are honored to be led by Mr. Koshin the last few years of his career. Although Mr. Koshin ended his career in education at Richmond Community Schools, I must not forget to mention where it all began, at Algenack High School, where, as both teachers, he met the love of his life and wife Kath Ween. Any educational institute that had Mr. Koshin as a part of it is better for it. Although my desk will never be as spotless as yours, I can learn so much from such an incredible person, and I know personally that I miss your leadership every day. Congratulations. It's well deserved.
They can go anywhere. You get your belt. Listen, I got mine at home.
On behalf of the students and staff and community of Richmond Community Schools, please accept this brass belt in recognition for your dedication of years of service and the significant contributions you have made to this organization. Your kindness and commitment to the students at Richmond Community Schools has positively impacted thousands of lives, and you know that. And for that, we thank you and wish you nothing but health and happiness in your retirement.
This is John Floyd, one. I'd just like to say to the two that are here tonight, Mr. Yushar, every time I saw you in the hallway, I had never seen you not with kids. But what I most appreciated was your ability to handle some challenging students and bring them down, calming them. The smile you had on your face as you walked through. You were a second mother to many children, and I appreciate what you did for many kids at Lee Elementary for your time that you were here, so thank you. Mr. Koshin, your boil and simmer is true. You are very calm. I have never met a man whose desk is as clean as yours.
Still is.
But everything that Heidi said, I echo. You were very dedicated. If you said you were going to do something, it always got done. You jumped in, coming from what I believe a middle school position to be an elementary principal, which is very different. You've got to put on the costumes and so forth, but the kids loved you, the staff loved you, and I can't thank you enough for what you've done for Richmond Community Schools.
Thank you.
Can I, are you still working, or did you retire?
Oh, I'm still working.
Well, yeah, that's true, but I'll... Just when your smile was so big, I'm thinking, does she retire? Okay, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. It's the CARE, Presentation of CARE. Mr. Wonsley, introduce.
Here with us is a representative from CARE, Joseph Gullik Bolino. I apologize. He and I had a conversation, but we touched base a while back because we were scheduling some administrative training. But with the recent events that have taken place, we wanted to be able to expand our network, not only for employees, but also for students. And so what I asked him to speak to the board about, which will go out to the community very soon, will be the Student Assistance Program and the Employee Assistant. More information about the Employee Assistant Program, so I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. Thanks for having me out. First, I'm going to talk about the Employee Assistant Program, this orange pamphlet here.
It should be in your board packet and pack on.
Yes, and in this pamphlet, this tri-fold pamphlet, it will have a center panel with the three bullet points of the services that are provided. How it works is that you pay one-time annual fee to provide for the employees, as well as the employees' dependents, some of these benefits. And one of the significant benefits is the problem-solving sessions, the five face-to-face counseling sessions. So if work is affecting home, if homeless affecting work, that employee could call us up and make an appointment and have five free face-to-face counseling sessions. So that's five per employee, per dependent, so each of their dependents also get their own five per year. And that's not always like an infomercial. That's not all, because it's per topic also. So if you're seeing somebody for a challenge, let's say some anxiety, and you have the five free sessions of anxiety, it gets you through some of those challenges. A few months after that, if maybe somebody passes and you need creative loss counseling, you get five more free sessions on creative loss counseling. A few months after that, maybe a gambling addiction or substance use disorder, you get five more free sessions on that. So it's five per employee, per dependent, per year, per topic. So that's the most significant benefit supplied by the EAP. Also, it's very convenient. You use it at your convenience. It's, you call us up. We have evening hours, so use it as your convenience on the day of the week that you want. Also, we have 50,000 affiliates throughout the nation, so our main campus is in Fraser on Utica and Masonic. It took me 35 minutes to be here. So if that's out of your way, or the employee doesn't want to go at that location, just call up, give us your zip code, and we'll find an affiliate closest to where you reside. Or if you have a dependent that is, let's see, their children are off-premise, going to school in Florida or California, they had older kids. Just they call up, tell us who their parent is and where their parent worked, and then we'll find an affiliate closer to where they reside nationwide. So pretty convenient there. It's voluntary. You use it if you don't, if you use it if you want, don't use it if you don't want. It's totally voluntary. It's totally paid up, 100%, totally free. No office visits, no premiums. Also, it's completely confidential. There's a lot of barriers of people reaching out to get help because they don't want their business out there, right? My father is 100% Italian. He always said, "Keep it in the house. Don't air your dirty laundry." And then there's also generational differences in getting help, things like that. So to know that it's completely confidential, you go through us. You don't go through Richmond Community Schools. You make your own appointments. Also, if it's convenient that a Richmond Community School employee made an appointment, and then another Richmond Community School made an appointment on the same day, if we can't schedule them on different dates out of your convenience, we always block out like two hours before an appointment, two hours after the appointment, so you'll never cross paths with your colleagues. So that's how confidential it is. So after the five free sessions, if you need continued counseling, they would kind of find out what kind of insurance you have if you have mental health coverage on your insurance. We would find a counselor that takes that insurance, and then we would refer you out on that fee-based service. Now, if you need one or two more sessions after the five free sessions, it is up to the counselor. Maybe one or two more meetings will get you through whatever you need to get through. They can throw those in for free. But if you need a few more, several more, we'll find a counselor that will take your insurance, and then we would refer you out from there. So besides that five free face-to-face, we also have a 24-hour, seven-day week phone access. And all the numbers is on the pamphlets in here, toll-free number. And during office hours, it goes to our call center, so you would call, tell us what your needs are. We could refer you to the website. We could give you any type of resources you're looking for. If there is a counselor available, you can talk to the counselor at that time. Although if you call after hours, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, weekend, holiday, it goes to our call center. There is a filter. It used to go 24/7 directly to the counselor, but we were getting too many calls of people calling at 3:00 in the morning just to cancel an appointment, and that wasn't a good use of the counselor's time. So now it does go to a call center. Tell us who you are. We'll have a counselor call you right back within minutes. And the last part I want to tell you is the website. We have a password-accessible website for the employees and the employees' dependents with the passwords in your pamphlets here. And the password for the website is kind of like a self-service. It has anything that has to do with families and wellness and work and safety. It's just a really self-serve website for any challenge that an employee or a family goes through. So that is kind of our EAP in a nutshell. And now we have you as a contractor with our Student Assistance Program. And the Student Assistance Program is a full-service contract for crisis support. So if you do need us out at the school, we'll send a crisis team out there to support the students as well as the employees for any situation. And we do, it is more of an assessment and referral. So the school can refer students to get the assessment. It's a co-occurring assessment. We assess for mental health as well as substance use. So the school can assess, as well as the parents. So if the parents are seeing some challenges with their children, maybe their child is very changed or isolated or angry or just having some difficulties or experimenting with drugs or alcohol, that is a concerned parent, they can call us up directly. They don't need a referral from the school. The parent could call CARE and make an appointment to get that assessment for their child. Now, the co-occurring assessments, the SUD assessment, they can continue with outpatient counseling and a mental health assessment that we would make that assessment, and then when we refer the family to the best resources that we can connect them with. A little bit about that, so the family, the counselor could sit with the parents for a little bit, and then they'll meet with the student for a little bit, and then the parents and the students and the counselor all together in one session. So one session could be anywhere from 60 minutes to 90 minutes, depending on the situation and who's involved. Questions?
Interested?
I'm a couple. I'm very aware of CARE. Usually, the building where I work, CARE referrals happen, the school district makes the referrals. So this, what we're talking about is we're going to offer this to our families. They don't have to have a referral from a school person. This is going to be offered if they want help.
With everything that's been going on and just really looking at the big picture of wellness and mental health, one of the concerns that we talked at our campus level was, you know, what happens outside of school? And that parent has that child who's, whatever the case may be. We want to be able to provide a resource for parents that will help them get at least started and get through some of this process, which is, this is one of the avenues that we're approaching.
Simply by, as a parent, I can just call the school and say, "Interested", as opposed to the school contacting CARE, having a contract with CARE for referrals.
As a parent, you'll call CARE directly. You'll just say, "I'm from Richmond." So the letter that will be going out prior to the holidays will introduce us. After the holidays, we would hope to do one this week, but with everything going on, it was hard. We will be running a parent informational meeting. We're doing a partnership presentation with the City of Richmond Police Department, talking about school safety and security. We're coordinating that right now, and this is part of it, to identify with parents. We're also coordinating this to address with staff too, so that they know what resources they have. But as a school, we also have that resource to still refer students through a school. And this is really looking at, we have phenomenal social workers and counselors. This is additional resources. What I appreciate most about is if there is a crisis, we've got to pull in extra people. We have an ability. We, I mean, just had a couple, Macomb County School, several, what, a year ago, had an incident that needed a lot of resources, and CARE was one of those organizations that was able to find support for staff and students.
Yeah, absolutely. And this, I assume is the right time to ask this question. We're doing this, which I think is wonderful, but what are we doing as a district, in particular inside our buildings, for staff, specifically the high school, middle school, for some things that have happened? What kind of things are we having for our people to be able to come together, talk about what happened, and work their way through it as well?
You're talking for staff or students?
I'm talking as a school district, for staff and students. What are we doing? This is out seen. What are we doing within our own family? What are we doing to take care of? It's been an extremely difficult last eight, nine days, and things have happened here that are unlike normally what we're used to here in Richmond. And Oxford is very close, and it touches a lot of families. The crisis in Oxford touched my family personally. So what are we doing for, to get our people and our students to feel, to be able to feel better, to be able to talk about what happened? What, you know, we locked down buildings. We conducted business as usual in buildings when things were crazy. What are we doing?
There's a couple things we've been doing. From at the classroom level, we've been carefully talking with kids. I'll start with the kids as age-appropriate. We don't want to create more fear, but we also want to have the conversation because kids are seeing this on a day-to-day basis. We're trying to measure or take the parameter of the students. We have social workers that have worked with kids. We have had, if the need is there that we are seeing, this will be a resource we're pulling for kids. That's our first step. The second was, but in the immediate response to, for staff, because we all dealt with this very differently based on our own experiences. The immediate response that we did was, number one, to let staff know we have an avenue outside for you, and Jamie sent that out. I am in the process, based on some of the questions or kind of the thought process that the board... that the board did, of putting a survey out to staff. And not, no asking questions, no askability. Where are you at, and what type of support services are you looking at? So I can either coordinate with district personnel, whether it's our counselors or social workers, or bring in outside people to help our staff.
And you did that survey?
I did, that survey's going out this week, trying to get a barometer now that, I don't want to say it's been two weeks and things have settled down, because they really haven't, but trying to get the initial shot out, and now we're into the day-to-day. So that survey, it's a very short one, right now there's only three questions. There's two that have been him and Haun, I've been talking with some other superintendents who have done similar things, or are going to be doing similar things in other districts, to get a barometer for our staff.
Because you know, you and I had a great conversation, and our staff, our social workers, all of that. Yes, but outside experts can help too.
I'd just like to say thank you to our district and CARE. Mental health is very, very hard, any kind of services to get into nowadays, to get to a counselor, to get to anybody. I like the fact that you're offering those three, you know, those five sessions, and then you will make a referral. Because it is, knowing myself, I've been through this experience with trying to get mental health, and it was horrendous.
It's because nobody cares about mental health in this country.
Yeah, well, we need to. So I think you.
I think the district too.
And I will echo what Joseph said, this is anonymous. As a district, we receive no information on any employee who accesses.
And I think that's huge, that's a huge thing that helps people to be able to do it. When you, you know, you just got to make that move yourself. But I think CARE's a great, a great resource. I've had experience with it for years, so it's a great resource. It's a really good, a really good start.
And if we had a group of teachers that were pretty impacted by the situation, that we do have, besides the crisis support to come up with a team, we do have a critical incidents stress debriefing. So if there was people that were impacted directly, that want to process that trauma, want to process that out, we would send a team out here, we just had a little circle of whoever, you know, from five to 10, to 15, to 20 employees, and we run a critical incidents stress debriefing with them.
I think that would be a really good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item on our agenda is a proposal for an overnight extended student trip.
So we had a slight change to our schedule. We dropped a tournament that we were going to go to, that was local, because we had the opportunity to go wrestle one of the top-ranked teams in our division. So you guys have in front of you a proposal overnight to Alma High School. We'll actually be staying in Mount Pleasant, and then making the quick drive down to Alma. So it's like a two and a half, almost three-hour drive from the school. And we thought that that one, again, is a little too long for our kids to wake up, five o'clock, drive and go wrestle. So mostly, information is similar to the previous ones. You've got all the hotel information, the what are we doing about the kids that aren't doing well in class, so. If you have any questions, I'm here, but you guys have seen these from me before, so.
Totally interesting.
Alma, Alma was the number three seed last year in D3. So we're hoping, last year, we didn't get the seed we wanted to, had to wrestle Dundee in the semis. We're hoping we go there, we knock off Alma, boom, we get a little better seed later in the year, so. And by then, we'll be rolling, so. Cool, and for me?
Questions?
All right, he's busy.
Hey, our next item on our agenda is our instructional spotlight on standard-based grading.
These are coming up, I know this was brought up, I think Angela, a couple meetings ago, so we wanted to at least start with this presentation. Obviously, if there's anything the board would like further, we'd be more than happy to provide it, but at least it gives a starting point for that information. The packet you have in front of you, the black and white, is the most recent. There's a slight change that was done since, not much of a comeback, it's going to change.
Excuse me, I'm really excited about this topic, so let me say, of course, right. One of the, when I first came to Richmond, I was excited for so many reasons, but one of the most exciting things was when I found out that the elementary and the middle school were for standard-based grading. So something about me is that I was personally trained by Dr. Robert Marzano. I opened the first Marzano Academy in the nation. So this standard-based proficiency scales, it's all second nature to me, and it's something I'm very passionate about, and I'm very excited to share this work, and a little bit about how standard-based grading goes along with the standard-based framework for learning. So standard-based framework is, standard-based grading is a very crucial piece in the standard-based framework. You can see that this is based on the work of Dr. Robert Marzano. The district heavily uses his other tools, such as classroom instruction that works, the ITW strategies, it's in our school improvement plans, it's in our district improvement plans, and the art and science of teaching. Both of those, the MISD also has adopted the work, as evident in its base practices as well. And just a little bit, standard-based grading is an integral way for teachers to track their students' progress and achievements while focusing on helping students learn and reach their highest potential. So this is a little bit about that work and where we fall in that. All right, so what the research says, this is a list of strategies that teachers can use, and their effect size of student achievement in the classroom. And you can see that by far, the highest effect size is tracking student progress in scoring scales, specifically when proficiency skills are used. And you mirror that with standard-based grading. When you are developing students' metacognition, when students are thinking about their own thinking, it has by far the highest effect size for student achievement. What standard-based teaching and grading does, this completely shifts the mindset to a competency-based education. Learning targets are typically written in student-friendly language so that they get to understand the goals of instructions. And this is what is able for students to be able to own that learning, and to be able to give them a roadmap of where they can go next. You can see that this is the overall standard-based framework overview. Standard-based grading is a critical piece to the framework for reporting purposes, for teachers to understand where students are in their learning, and more importantly, so the students can understand where they are in their learning, provide a roadmap for that, as well as, our job is to accurately report where students are in their learning. So you can see with all of these steps, a little bit of where we are. We're in a little bit of different places at each building, but it's all good. This is the overall framework, these are the steps that we're going to take, and it's awesome. So I'm very excited. And of course, this is just kind of the implementation data from the first year. So what I did was I took the initial five-year term data, and I looked at the baseline years of the year we did not do standard-based grading, and I compared it to the first year's implementation data. That was when it was in full effect, there were the parent workshops, there were teacher training, it was evident in the classrooms, and you can see that we had great student achievement scores in that year. Of course, you know that in 2020, we had no test because of the pandemic. So this was the student achievement data for the first year of its implementation, when it was in full force. And I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Mangumi to talk about what a standard-based report card looks like.
All right, so what you have in front of you is a traditional report card, and then also a standard-based report card. So as you can see, as a lot of us had, had looked at when we were in school, mathematics, you may be getting an A, B, C, or D. And so what we want to really do is be the surgeons. We need to know that math is beyond just mathematics, so we need to look at the broad topics to drive the instruction. When I really think about this, the analogy I like to use is, as you can see on the right side, there are many different standards there, and we wouldn't want to treat your arm if you have a broken leg. And that's really what you can get into if you're really looking at math, is a broad topic. We have students that might be proficient in algebraic thinking, but they're not proficient in geometric shapes, and so they're very different. So you want to make sure that you're taking the right roadmap with that student. So I feel that this is, and I have some things that teachers have also said in the presentation too, it gives you a roadmap of how to drive your instruction. We're going to be doing it, Lee, in our next PD on Martin Luther King Day. We have somebody coming in from the MISD to do work on unpacking standards. So that's going to support and strengthen our work with the standard-based report cards, because that way, they can do the unpacking and, again, do the surgery. So if I was to just say, "Your child is going to be working on multiplication, and they need to know how to multiply big numbers", that's maybe something that we would have heard prior to standard-based grading. If you go ahead and look at the screen, you can see that there is so much more involved when we really look at the standard. So you're looking at what vocabulary do they need to know, what power verbs? You need to know the targets, the learning targets, and then where they need to go. So it may look something like this when it comes time for the big game. So when they have to prove to you what does proficiency look like. So again, this is very targeted, so we know where our students are at and where they need to go. We know that rolling this out in 2018 was a bit new for our families and for our staff as well. So what we did is we created a report card guide that was in friendly terms for our parents, because with anything, it's a mind shift, you have to get used to it, it's like a muscle you haven't worked before. So it takes some time to kind of get to know it. So we've created this, it's under the parent page here on the Richmond website, and it gives you a report card guide for each grade level. And I'm going to show you a little bit of what some of that is. So we've kind of broken down what does AP, P, PP, and NP mean. You know, we've seen the 1, 2, 3, 4s, we know the ABCDs, but AP is something that we found would be helpful for our parents and students. It says, wow, you not only ride a bike on your own, but you can pop a wheelie, jump ramps, and perform other bike stunts. So we really try to get the analogies with the younger kids so they understand, you know, where they're at with their learning, and also parents, as they are, you know, not really understanding or seeing this for the first time. We also have on that same page where we have the standard and what, at what time of the year that will be taught. I did get a quote from a teacher, Mrs. Barrett, I'd like to read. I kind of just asked her what she thought of standard-based grading, and this is what she thought. "It allows students to gain a clear picture of where their learning is at and where it is going. Standards set the criteria for the successful demonstration of the understanding of a concept or skill. They provide a concise description of everything that a student should be able to do before moving to the next level of education. Standard-based report cards allow parents to see where they are working towards mastery and may need additional help if they are only partially proficient or not proficient." It's hard to find there.
Good evening. Going to talk about two parts tonight about the middle school standard-based grading. One is to talk about where we're at, where we've come from and where we're at. The other is to try to answer some questions or mention where we can improve in the communications so that we are preparing our kids for high school. In 2017, '18, it was, the final product was ready to roll out. We had, probably were working on this rollout for three to four years, training staff, having a collaboration, unpacking standards, so on and so forth, hosting parent meetings, so on and so forth. And in our first year of implementation, we sent letters home in our information packet. We had a teacher PowerPoint and a guide to Power School and explanations during parent-teacher conferences. It was our goal to over-communicate how to read Power School and how to find what you're looking for on a report card. And I'm going to have Mr. Burtmeier come over in a second with our work with Power School, with what we did in year one, a little bit before we rolled it out, but specifically in year one, leading up Power School. 1920 was our year two. That was a big year for us with the fourth grade move to RMS. And so those fourth grade teachers coming over, we caught them up as quickly as possible, standard-based grading. And the catching them up quickly part is just to go over the rubrics, to talk about proficiencies, to make sure the teams are on the same page. So a lot of time was spent. And then you can see, we had nine new teachers that year as well, in year two implementation. So quite a bit of time was taken up teaching and going over what standard-based grading is, and how to use Power School, how to put assignments in Power School, how to tie standards to tests, so on and so forth. And then parent-teacher conferences, again, we wanted to over-communicate how to read Power School and what parents are actually looking for. And then we had continuing conversations with fifth through eighth students and parents. And then that spring, unfortunately, COVID hit, shut us down. So then fast forward to 2021, the 2021 school year. Our focus then was the back-to-school plan, getting three new teachers on board with standard-based grading. COVID protocols, virtual ops, and then spring testing resumed. I would say that somewhere between 19 and 21 of the spring, in there, we hit a pause button, and that's why on 21, 22, we hit the pause button again to unpause, and we're working on standard-based grading again. Because our goal in year two, three, and four was for us to become the gold standard with the county, with the state, and so on, as far as really doing standard-based grading the way it's supposed to be done. And I thought we were on a pretty good path to that. So we're hitting up pause button, our nine new teachers from a year and a half ago, started PD in August, in September of this year. We spent time, then we spent time in November, and then January, professional development day, we're going to continue so that we can continue hitting the ground running and take it to the next level so we're all experts on it. On the middle school standard-based grading website, there are resources, our parent pamphlet for standard-based grading, the parent meeting, actually, PowerPoints is still there from 18, 19, common questions and answers, proficiency rubric, parent, Power School parent portal, and then Power School parent navigation, which is an extremely important document that we mailed out two straight years. It's on me that we didn't, it was last year. But it's a very useful tool to help parents with standard-based grading and Power School. I will say that a lot of parents, when they start in fourth grade, they get on a Power School, and they can check their students' progress. If they use their cell phone, it is a lot tougher than if they're on the regular computer because the screens are so small, and there's so much information there, and it doesn't always show up about what I'm going to go over here in a second. And then there's some great links to some resources here. Now, this page, and I'm going to call up Anthony, is a page that we created with screenshots to help parents navigate through our parent portal, but then also what the report card would look like. So we did send out all the parent portal information this year to all our fourth-grade parents, letting them know they can get on and they can check their kids' work and progress. And then in this parent portal, in the left-hand column, once they get on, they even go to grades and attendance. And then from there, in this middle one up at the top, is where they actually click on an "I" icon, and it opens up the assignments for the class and marking period they want. Then this next one here, in the middle, is like a little bar graph, blue number line. You click on that, and it opens up this square, or this rectangle on the bottom, and it lists all of the standards that were associated to that assignment, and what the grade level was or proficiency level was for that assignment. So that's pretty powerful information on every single assignment that goes out. Now, you take that over to this far-right column, and you click on standard grades, and then you click on the class, and it pulls up the overall standard, what your grade is, should it be like on a report card. So the middle here is the formative assessments, it's the practice, it's the homework, it's the quick quizzes. But the actual performance assessment... But the actual performance assessment or task would be over here on the right-hand column, which is listed by each standard. So if, if the semester ended today, or quarter, whatever, this far right, and it's the right tab in there, tells you what the overall proficiency would be. And when we rolled this out, Power School was not built for Standard-Based Grading. So through Mr. Burtmeier's connections with the Regional Data Coalition and Power School gurus, and he and, I know Ms. May and Ms. Jar would tell through Mr. Burtmeier what we needed our report cards to say. It's getting a lot better, but it's nowhere near. So if you want to explain that, I'll say it.
Yeah, sure. We were lucky in that when we started moving to Standard-Based Grading, the county, at the same time, was moving away from data director and looking for a new housing area to house all of our data. We were part of the group who was piloting and looking at different programs, and we ended up settling on a program, which was eventually purchased by Power School. And the good news is that it gave us connections with the programmers of Power School. And this all happened right at the time when we were trying to do Standard-Based Grading at the middle school. There's now a lot of programs out there. Traditional grading has been around forever, and that's what school programs are built to work on, because it works in every school. And then they try to go back and create ways for Standard-Based Grading to fit in. So we were able to present to the county and Dave Nelson, who works at Power School, what we were doing at Richmond. The county was amazed, they praised our teachers and the work that we're doing. We were in the county the furthest along that have actually taken Standard-Based Grading to a level where we're looking at every standard and trying to report that out to parents. So we had the connection by working through this program and Dave Nelson to send feedback back to Power School. So some of the areas that you see on this screen are because Richmond has decided that we wanted to do what was best for students and try to show all the standards and where students lie in that information and give that information to Power School and say what's working, what's not working by feedback based from our teachers, Ms. May, and giving that to Power School. We're not there all the way yet. The county still does reach out to us for what's working, what's not working. We're, we're getting there, and hopefully, at some point, Power School will be more, known more as a Standards-Based Grading platform. But we're, we're starting to shift that so that it's much easier. You don't have to push as many steps as you originally had to to be able to see where students need to be, and we're able to upload that information much quicker.
Thank you, Mr. Burtmeier. So, and, and the company there, unfortunately, in, in Power School and everything, with what's happened over the last two years, you know, they, they've hit, hit the pause button as well and don't have as many meetings, and the meetings that they do are virtual. So some of this stuff, just in general, across the country, you know, a lot of it, people have hit the pause button. But, you know, we're, we're ready to go again already this year, starting with the standards again and hitting the reset button and, or pause button to stop it, the pause to keep our momentum moving forward. The goal for us moving forward is to make this user-friendly for parents, to help parents help, help their child. These steps and going into Power School and looking at the proficiencies and stuff and the scales, I think our teachers do an excellent job with their students. I think that we need to take that to the next level. And it's no fault of, to anyone, but take that to the next level to parents so that they can continue to be our partners in their child's education. This is the group of students, I've talked about them before. This group, over their four years of being in the middle school, showed tremendous growth, work ethic, and results. This is our current freshman class. Where they were when they first came to school, before, before fourth graders came here. So in 17, 18, they were fifth graders, and we were traditional grading. And at the end of that traditional grading, fifth grade year, they were below the state and county average in both math and ELA. And then in the first year of Standard-Based Grading, at the end of their sixth grade year, they jumped 13 and 10% in both them steps. They passed the county and state in math, and they were 1% lower in the county in ELA. Then we didn't have a test. And then year three of Standard-Based Grading, they were 65% proficient. They were above the state and county average in the ELA, and then they were 33.6 proficient, above the state and 1% below the county in math. I'm not saying this is because of Standard-Based Grading, but this is a good indicator that it's, it's not hurting us. If we were, if the trend was going backwards and our scores were tanking, then I would be a little concerned. But this group being the consistent group over the last three, four years in our building with the improvement with us changing grading scale. Now, this year's PSAT will tell us more about our current eighth grade class, and then next year, so on and so forth. I personally think that we need five years of data to really dissect whether our program's working or not. And unfortunately, the four years that we have, because this is year four, has two major events that happen in it. So I'm going to pull up some, some teacher quotes. I'm not going to read them, I'll, I'll let the audience read them. Give them a second to read it. I have a quote from Mrs. Molly Shack, one of our, she's our band director. So I have specials, feelings towards Standard-Based Grading, then a fourth grade teacher, a fifth grade teacher, and then other two teachers here tonight to represent sixth, seventh, eighth grade, to give you their feelings. Okay, I'll give you a second. Next one, this is from Mr. Gillespie. Next one. Mrs. Gillespie. Before I turn it over to Ms. Jar, Mrs. Krampkin, so few goals moving forward is bringing out methods and over-communicating with parents to make sure that they can read a difficult report card on, on Power School. Part two is the million-dollar question about homework. Yeah, holding our kids accountable for homework. With that, first year of implementation, we had a zone that was where you couldn't miss any homework assignments or you had detention after school. And if you got all of them, then you didn't have a detention. Teachers donated lots of times, because that was Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We're talking about maybe bringing that back. Fourth, fifth, and sixth grade teachers do an excellent job, and they even give up their lunch to hold kids in to make sure their, their homework is done. And then seven and eight, part of the hook for homework is you can't go retake if you don't have all 80% of your homework in. So those are the things we're working on that we understand. It's getting homework. And third, homework has to be meaningful. If it's, if it's just busy work, then there's no sense getting it. So, please.
To piggyback off of that, I have seen a great increase in homework, because the students are seeing the connection between the standards that we talked about and the homework that they're getting, the practice that they're getting. The students know when they're struggling in math, they don't come and say, "I just don't know math. My parents did no math, I don't know math." They know the questions to ask, the specific areas that they're struggling with. And I've seen the confidence, because they know they can do some things. They're struggling in other areas, and that confidence is on helping them push themselves to be better in those other areas where they're struggling. And then finally, they're asking for opportunities to move towards that AP. What can I do? I know I understand this, what can I do to get that advanced proficient? And in terms of the eighth grade math, moving more towards looking at multiple choice tests, because that's what they see with the PSAT. I push them, "Well, you know the right answer, tell me why the other ones are wrong. Explain the reverse of it." Just bringing in, expanding their thinking, expanding their learning is absolutely what I have seen over the past few years with it. Just the confidence, I'm amazed at the confidence that I've seen in math, and I believe the test scores reflect that.
My experience is so different, because Christie teaches math, and math in ELA, we're looking at a list of skills. They can add two numbers, they can subtract two numbers. I teach social studies, and it's not at all what we all grew up with, memorize the names these days, places on the map. It's concepts, it's making connections to the real world, problem-solving in this global world. This really works for my subject. I don't need how many points because they could name five places. I can, I can watch them problem solve. The other day, they were figuring out which powers go to this part of the government versus that part of the government, and the discussions they were having. It wasn't fill in the blank on the worksheet. So the kids are more interested in this, and they're learning. And I can see that they're learning, and like Mrs. Krampkin said, when they don't know something, they come up and say, "What do we need to, to do to get proficient at this? Because I didn't get it." And they ask, and they want to know. So it really works with my curriculum. I've seen the benefit with all the curriculums. I agree, parents, I think, have the hardest time with it. And we need to work on the homework issue, because that is a real-life skill. It's part of our SHINE score, but we need to figure something out. And lastly, I want to give kudos to Mr. Bartels, because what we do does work, but it would not work without his support and giving his staff the time to collaborate and work together. Common rubrics, common planning time. None of it would happen if we were all in our own little bubbles. So, thank you.
A little long one in, though. Matty, you have one.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
I think the biggest issue, and I've heard it about a couple times here, is are all your teachers, and I have three fourth grade teachers, are they, have they had discussions on what's considered proficient? What's considered advanced proficient? Because I think that's the hardest part.
It is. And they, they do have, they have the common rubrics. So they share the rubrics and they build them together. Now, if you're new to the fourth grade or you're new to the building, it takes time and confidence to analyze that rubric.
Do we keep going back? Do we keep having those discussions, though?
So one of the things, too, that I noticed is if this is, you know, a non-negotiable, what is our onboarding process for when we do have new teachers? And when is that dedicated time to be able to sit and really go over this for them like a teacher onboarding for those things? We're in different places, but I have seen the discussions start. I think that there needs to be more teacher collaboration, which kind of goes into the next presentation.
But, but absolutely. Like this year with the PD before school, one day it was them and departments talking about proficiency scales and what it means in their units. Then we did it again in November, and then the January PD, we're going at it again. So it's all dedicated to that and some other training, but majority of it will be that.
That's the hardest part?
Yep.
Angela, does it answer your questions?
Um, not, I have a few questions, actually. I totally agree with the standard-based learning process. I feel that that is great in the education aspect. I guess where I struggle is the grading element still for me as a parent. And I guess what, I, I, what is a proficient? Are they 75% proficient in that category? Because me, as a parent, that's still a struggling student. Or are they 95% as a proficient student?
And that's, and that's the difficult part, is when you're talking about Standard-Based Grading, if you kind of take away the percentages.
Okay.
You take away that whole notion. It's about, this is the standard, did they meet it, yes or no? And if they met it, they're proficient. If they went above that target, if they're able to do something within a more complicated text, then they're above that proficiency. If they're not quite getting it, then they fall into that partially proficient. So we just have to, it, it's very different. You take away the notion of what is 70% is. The traditional grading is what put that stigma of grades and percentages there. We associate 75% with C. But if you take that away to say, clearly, did they make this, did they meet this benchmark? Can they multiply double digits, yes or no? And that's where you think that that is where it is, that's the target.
I understand that, but if they can just multiply those digits on that one assessment, how do we know? I guess I'm, I'm still struggling to understand, as a parent, is a proficient means they don't need any extra help at home, or does it not? And how are, is it with our students that are proficient in eighth grade? Are they continuing on to be an A student in the ninth grade? Or, like, I guess that's what I'm struggling with. Where does it stand up? Are we setting them up to, to be successful in the previous grade? Where are our ninth graders now? Where have our ninth graders been in the last four years? As far as when they switch, you know?
Right.
And go into there.
If, if the teachers are teaching to the learning targets and the kids are, are learning the learning, then they ought to be successful. Because the bottom line is, we want them to know the content. We want them to know the material. So if they get it and they get proficient on it based on the rubric and expertise of the teacher, then they should have it regardless of what grade scale they have.
So I guess that is my question, do we have numbers?
But I think the question is, whereas if they're, if they're proficient, if I'm listening to correctly, they're proficient, they go into ninth grade. So it is, are they still?
Is it still holding up? Are they still proficient? Yes.
The kid that's proficient, now he gets, he or she gets A, B, C. So proficient is a C grade where?
Well, proficient isn't a C.
No, no, I, I know what you're saying. But now they're moving into high school, and they have grade, and it is percentages for a grade.
In high school, right?
Correct. So the question is, they're proficient, which means they, they get it, right? That's what you're saying. They have, they have met, you said they answered the question, yes or no? Okay, now when they move to high school, they were proficient, but now they're taking the next math class, let's say. They're getting a C in math in ninth grade, but they were proficient here. How is that? If as a parent, if a parent, if I'm thinking my kid is proficient, they're meeting, they're, all the questions are yes. All the answers are yes. Now they're getting a C.
But, but here's the million-dollar question with that assessment that they got a C on. What made it a C? Was it equal, was it equal percentages of the different standards?
Sure, right. Because what you said was the teacher. So the question is, if you're saying it's the teacher, then, and Angel, if I'm butting into your, I'm sorry. But if it's the teacher, how the teachers are doing it, at the middle school, the teachers are doing it this way. But if you're saying the high school teachers, are the high school teachers not doing it right? Are we not flowing through from?
That's my question for you.
But it's a question for me to ask you, you're presenting.
The standards are vertical, vertically aligned. So as they go into So as they go into from eighth grade, if they are proficient, then what you're going to see is a similar standard because all the standards are very similar. So when they go into ninth grade, you're going to see them have to maybe acknowledge it in another way or do it in a more difficult layered text. Or maybe they have to show instead of triple digits, now they have to move in, they have to do, you know, they have to do, you know, more digits. They have to be.
I think what the, what the question needs to come is that we, we've now been given a, a presentation on elementary and middle school, how it all works. Perfect. Then when we, then when we move to high school, I think the next question is then, the teachers in the high school and the high school principal can be here to tell us about your question of the last three ninth grade classes. I think that's the next step.
See, because.
You've, you've done, you've done what you need to do to get them to the high school part. So now let's hear the high school part.
Right. Because you're right. Because on, on an algebra test, for example, say chapter one, 90% of that test could be on the most basic and easiest parts of that chapter. Whereas in the middle school, you're getting tested on every single one.
Okay, so but, okay, now what you're saying is the high school teachers aren't doing a very good job.
I didn't.
No, no. Because they're not doing the standards.
Well, they should be tested, they should still be teaching to the standards even if they are not.
Right. Correct. I think what has to happen now, this, this is just my, whatever else is at the table face because I'm going. We've got, we've got two of the three groups that teach our children. So now the question is what happens when they get to ninth grade? Because ninth grade is a tough year. You come from that middle school into high school, everything's so different. You come from standard-based back to old tradition.
Traditional.
Traditional. Okay? I think that's, I think that's the next thing that needs to be presented to the board. And how, how's that working? What are our scores? Because our scores, but math, math's not a great score for us. That's real. So if we're missing something between, here's what we're doing at the middle school level, the eighth grade, here's, here's what we're, here's what we're talking about. And then we get into ninth grade and our score's kind of, okay, so what's, where are we missing? We're missing somewhere.
We can break for the board. They went the next step. We'll sit down with the high school, let's focus on that transition and then what the high school's doing.
It'd be interesting just to see his freshman scores.
I think the walkway that I, that I think, and I, I don't know if it was Mrs. Jarre or Mrs. Krampkin said it, I know Mr. Bartels said it, the hours of work that teachers have gotten, have done in discussion in terms of what we want kids to do is a whole different mindset in a professional conversation because it clarifies what kids need to do. Now where we're not is, we're not just averaging numbers and, you know, I may not be strong in division, but I'm strong in multiplication. And by the averages, I'm 60%. We're trying to focus on where kids' strengths are and where we need to focus our energy and resources. But I, but I will agree, we need to have the next conversation and look at the high school and see how that played out. So we will plan that for a future board meeting on the, on the high school aspect. So. And I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. I've been part of, I haven't been directly with all the PD, but I know the level of conversation. I happened to be at the middle school at the beginning of the year where they did, I'm just amazed at the conversation. I happened to be at one of the presentations earlier on, I think about two years ago, Mrs. Kletzby presented, we divvied up and Mrs. Shaq happened to be in that room. And I just remember her aha that it gives the students where they're at now and where they need to progress to rather than just say, you're a B and what does that B mean? Which gives them a lot more information. And that's, that's what we want. We want kids to take ownership of their education, to know where they're at and where they need to go and preparing them for that life after high school. So.
Are we hearing any high schools? Any more high schools getting into it or no?
Well, the big ones, Dad'sville.
Yeah. I knew that, that was when I was here. So nobody else has really jumped on.
And this is, I will say in our instructional meetings, this is a conversation we're having amongst the three of us and constantly throwing that around. So although we haven't presented on it, when the three of us do meet, it is something, I mean, it's the, it comes up, it just does because, you know, it's like what's next? What's the progression and where do we need to go? And we're meeting with consultants at the ISD about math. So it's in the works, but I think it'll be nice to present in front of, in front of you all to, to what's next.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Our next item on our agenda is our staff and community survey results.
So to set the stage, as you know, we received, every district received funding from what we call SRT3, which is the elementary and secondary schools, the emergency relief fund. It's funding that came down from the federal government. Throughout the process, they have been adding rules, changing it. And so our first, our first informals is we don't want to turn any dollars away, so we're going to make sure we're in compliance, number one. And part of that process is we had to survey staff, community members, get different stakeholder groups and community members, and then put a plan together and then a budget for how we're going to spend the dollars. And our last budget cycle back in, when you approved it in June, we talked about some of the dollars we had earmarked out of SRT, COVID relief, COVID building substitutes, COVID aid, which we're going to talk to. This kind of now came after the fact, so we're, we're, maybe number one, make sure we're in compliance. So I'll let you take over the survey and the narrative and then I think Mrs. Shaq's going to come up and talk about the budget.
Yep. So I've got three things. First one is the SRT staff survey. This went out to all staff here at Richmond and you can see the, it goes really deep into what the 19 allowable expenditures for SRT3 are. And it allowed staff to be able to comment on specific billing needs pertaining to the appropriate allowable purchases. We didn't have a lot of response on this one. Like I said, it went out through school email, but it was this, you know, these 19 official allowable expenditures, a pretty dense rubric. But you can definitely see that there were responses from, from staff members and they were anonymous. Does anybody have any questions about this, the staff survey? They also were able to take the community survey. The community survey had 171 answers. We had, we had representation from all stakeholder groups, so that was very exciting. We got responses from all locations. So we had our, you know, all of our buildings, middle school, high school, Lee's, central office. We were able to have representation of stakeholder groups from parents, students, teachers. We had representation from students or from parents of students of English language, homelessness, foster care, migrants, special education, and five oh fours. The utilization of funds, it was about a two-minute survey, but the utilization of funds, the highest need is add additional support for teaching staff to support student interventions, professional development, and increase instructional practices for all students as the highest rated way that we could use these dollars. Does anybody have any questions on these community surveys?
So, so just interrupt you for a minute. So the survey results we look at, we prioritize where the stakeholders are saying, and now we're getting into the narrative that we're going to be submitting for the grant, which prioritizes those dollars based on what the community and staff said.
And you do have the official narratives that are going into the grant application. But to summarize, one requirement of the SRT3 grant was to create narrative statements and how the budget items were correlated to the mitigation strategies to opening schools for in-person learning, address academic impact of loss of instruction time, academic learning loss, and how the remaining funds would be spent. So for the prevention and mitigation strategies, we have built into the budget our COVID aids, building substitutes. For academic impact of loss of instructional time, you can see that we are spending dollars on summer school programming for K-12. For academic learning loss, we intend to post for an instructional coach, learning loss specialist in mathematics to target best instructional practices, provide teacher classroom support, and acceleration strategies. We also budgeted to provide compensation for core teachers to establish professional learning communities, otherwise known as the PLC process, to analyze student data, adjust instruction, and help struggling students. To ensure high-quality instruction occurs for all students, providing instructional technology is also being committed. Remaining funds outlined are on counselors, stipends for virtual instructors, instructional staff compensation for retention. Does anybody have any questions about our narratives?
So the plan of the narratives, and we highlighted certain things in your packet in yellow on that document, the narrative, is going to correlate to the budget that Tammy's going to talk to you about. And one of the things that I, I know this board knows is in the budget, the council, we have one FT, a part of a counselor in the general, general fund, a part of it's paid through SRT dollars. This plan has us slowly phasing that counselor back to be 100% general fund. So by the end of when all these dollars are gone and the federal government dollars are gone, we, our plan is to have that counselor back into the general fund. In a process of each year when we do the budget, we get put a little bit more in each year so that it's not as drastic and so we can obviously look at where we, where we need to adjust any budget dollars. So I'll turn it over to Tammy on that aspect of the budget. And as Tammy's walking up, the yellow areas that we highlighted correlate to the subcategories on the budget.
Okay. I think we need to form in your packet and it shows that our total funding for SRT3 is $1,748,589. 20% of that amount must be used for, to address the learning loss. That 20% represents just under $350,000. And at this point, we're preparing a budget to submit to the state. The state has released or made available to us two-thirds of that 1.7 million. So we'll be submitting a budget in the next couple of days for about $1,165,000. Then when they release the balance, we will add to the budget the additional, about $583,000. This is our current spending plan. It can be changed or amended as conditions change. You know, we base a lot of the numbers on, all the numbers on our current staff. So if there are staffing changes, the numbers will change. So they do allow us to make changes as needed. We are allowed to start with indirect costs. We can take 4.06% of, of the grant and use it for indirect costs, which we have done. Then we've put in building, COVID building aids. There's three years worth of building aids, which brings a total of about $212,000 for those three years. We also have built in the COVID building sub-teachers for each of the three years and that totals about $303,000. As Brian mentioned, the counselors, we've got 50% this year, 25% next year. And then in the third year, which is the '23, '24 fiscal year, that's all general fund. So there's nothing for the third year. But that total for the two years is about $189,000. Renee mentioned the instructional coach, learning loss specialist. If we bring that person in for half of this year, which would be sometime late January, and then have the full FT for years two and three, that would be about $272,000. And that includes pay, benefits, insurance, everything that position would be allowed. In the teacher contract, we have the retention bonuses built in for years one, two, and three. That totals around $246,000. We have the professional development for all the instructional core teachers for each of the years. Actually, this year, year one, we have nothing budgeted, but in years two and three is where we would start that process and that's about $215,000. And as Renee mentioned, the stipend for teachers for live synchronous virtual instruction, there's a dollar amount in each year. We're hoping that will decrease with the highest month this year and the lowest amount in year three. So the budget's about $120,000 for that. We mentioned summer school programs. And so in years, year one, we're planning to offer a summer school program, but we have other grants, carryover dollars that we have to use. So we would cover the summer of '22, summer school program using those grant funds and then fund years two and three, the summer of '23 and summer of '24 out of the SRT funds, which would be about $47,000 in total for the two years. And then as Renee mentioned, instructional technology, we've budgeted around $76,000 for instructional technology. So if you add all those numbers up, it brings us to the $1.7 million. And again, that can be changed as needed as we move forward.
Good question. What is, like I noticed on our COVID building aids, we have two positions that aren't currently filled. What happens to that money?
Right now, we budgeted to the staffing that we have, but we would modify. You know, it depends on the number of days they work, that type of thing.
So we could use that, as long as we're using that money?
Correct.
Somewhere in there because what if we don't ever get?
Correct. Like for instance, and I'll just use this example, if in year two, we have other resources that provide summer program, those dollars can be reallocated to mainstay.
So we can move this around.
So this is very, it's fluid. But the broad categories that are here are based on the narrative and what the survey results show is what we tried to develop.
Okay. I was just curious where that money, if we can move it around or not?
Yes, we can.
That is a risk because we have to spend everything by 2024, at the end of that school year. So if things are not being expended because, for a variety of reasons, staffing issues, we've had vacant positions, just trying to find people, we might need to shift and come up with other resources or other ways of spending the dollars.
Okay. Do you, do you know if we have to be, you've got to resubmit anything if we move things around or?
Yes, as we amend it, as these numbers change, we would submit an amendment for the approval at the state level.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to item F. It's our review of board policy 2303. Ms. Teltow asked at the last meeting that we take a look at this board policy. And I also checked with our attorney on it. This policy talks about our board code of ethics and what could happen if we violate them. It just goes through, we can either dispute it or the person can dispute it or, as a board, we can investigate. So it does have that kind of, there are steps built in here. Some of the things that could happen if we violate is we can censor a board person, we can remove them from a committee, we can remove a board member from an office or position. It does go to the next step if we were to remove somebody, but that has to go to the governor. We also have, if they violate the constitution in any way as far as a criminal offense, then we would involve our local police. I'm not quite sure what you wanted me to go or ask or whatever. I did talk with the attorney as far as our situation. She stated she doesn't think going after someone on our board is good for board relations. She felt that our objection was duly noted, what she provided for information, I might have to watch because some of this was in our closed session. She felt it was important that we go over again, which I did on our last meeting, about collaboration. We need to be working together. We need to be working with our superintendent. We as a board need to encourage constructive dialogue among board members instead of us going after each other. So I don't know if there was anything else you wanted or?
Well, I didn't need you to go speak to the attorney.
We had already talked about it, so.
But I wanted you to talk about that because the last time you talked about every other part of policies but that part.
Okay.
So that's why I wanted that to be brought up. And that's all well and good, what the attorney feels we should do or shouldn't do as a board, but the reality is there's a problem sitting on this board. And if we don't talk about it, if we don't figure out what to do about violating our board ethics or not doing our jobs. And you and I have had many conversations about this and you have stated opinion, your opinions to me. We've had great conversations. I'm asking you to do your job as the board president and look into this.
Well, I just want to make, okay, I understand where you're coming from, but I'm going to say that there are other members of this board that have violated it too, as far as board policy.
Did I say one particular person?
Well.
I did not.
Okay.
There's three people.
Well, there's more than three people.
There's three people.
Well, I have another person that I'm thinking of who treated me in appropriately and who violated our board policy about encouraging constructive dialogue. Okay? So.
Well, it's here.
We all need to hear it though.
Well, the thing is, we've been hearing it. We've been hearing it since January. We had a workshop about it. We keep hearing it, but we're not doing anything about it as a board.
Well, right now, I don't feel like we need to, but I think we've.
That's really, that's really unfortunate because that's not the conversation you and I have had.
If it goes further, yes.
Well, the one that had to go further is the board president. It says right there, if there's been an allegation for it, the board president talks to the individual.
I have. Talks to the individual. And they're disputing it.
And they're disputing it.
Correct.
Okay. Well, then that comes, it needs to come back to the board table. Well, then, that comes, it needs to come back to the board table. Whoever you've had the conversation with, it's been disputed, and we need to talk about it. And if the majority of this board decides that that kind of unethical behavior is good for this board, then that's what this board is. But the bottom line is, we are never going to be able to work together and do what's in the best interest of this district because not everybody sitting at this table wants to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda is public comments. Since the last board meeting, I received one email from a parent about our emergency preparedness plan. It was referred to Mr. Wonsley, and I know that, I think she's scheduled a meeting or wants to schedule a meeting or has scheduled...
We did schedule, we did schedule a meeting and had a conversation with her, her some information that she requested, we did provide that to her. When I say we, it was Mrs. Lashbrook and Mrs. Forwood, for that involved on news too.
Was that the email we all...
Yes, yes.
Yes. And then I also received an email from a parent on the reason for our school closure on Friday, December 3rd, which was the day after. And I did not, I did not send it to Mr. Wonsley, I just answered because we were out of, we didn't have sufficient staff to cover the building. Okay. That's all that I received as far as email from the public. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Hello and good evening. My name is Heather Giallockvitz, and I work here in the media center at RHS. I came here tonight to address concern, and I have had since the beginning of the school year, in regards to having to keep all four doors of the media center open. With the recent tragic event that happened at Oxford and having our own possible threats, my concern and worry has only escalated along with my anxiety. I have brought this concern up three times prior to the Oxford incident to my supervisors. With never feeling safe with all four doors open, I would keep three of them closed. At first, I was told that the doors had to stay open for fire safety and regulation. However, when there is a fire and the alarm goes off, the doors will automatically close if they are open. Later, the reason was changed to keeping the doors open for airflow. Sometime in October, I was told that if any of the doors are closed during the day that I will be written off. Not understanding the open door policy for airflow or why the punishment for being written off, a meeting was scheduled on 11/3 with my supervisors and Mr. Wonsley. In this meeting, concerning the four open doors for the media center, only a few things were decided in the end, and they were: the doors are to stay open, I will be written off if they are closed, and if an active shooter is happening, I will need to go towards the danger to lock and shut all four doors to secure the room and help any students find cover. I would like for everyone to take a moment and look where my desk is located and ask yourself if you were in that position with hearing gunshots, if you would have the proper time to secure this room without becoming an open target. The media center is located by only a few feet from the front entrance, in a very open place for many individuals to gather in one location, a ideal place to hurt or kill many at one time. We know that time is of importance in an active shooter scenario, and you need to find a safe place to take cover, which brings up my next concern. In the past, when my desk was located on the other side of the media center, my back room was the designated location to take the students and myself. This is no longer an option for me, so I have been told by our CFP director. I was told going towards the open doors with potential danger is not the option, but that is what I'm supposed to do to close and secure four doors. I hope you can see and understand my confusion on this. In the event the media center does get locked down properly, there is still no protocol in place for where any student should go for safety from a active shooter. From these concerns, I would like to have explained and procedures put in place on the following. One, how does having the four media center doors open provide airflow to or from the media center? And more importantly, how does that airflow trump the safety of the lights that would be in this room if there was an active shooting taking place? Second, the media center doors need to be addressed and find any alternative way to get them secured quickly, efficiently, without putting anybody's life at risk. Three, a plan to put students and staff in a safe location quickly and away from a shooter before our first lockdown drill takes place. I hope we will never have to endure a horrific tragedy like the one at Oxford, and I hope we will learn a little more from it to make the necessary changes to the media center and to the Richmond Community Schools to help make everyone who is in our schools feel safe to come to work and to learn. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I actually didn't really plan on saying anything, so I kinda have to go over my little tear a little bit, but I was really excited to hear the person from here talk. I've been very passionate about mental health in this school for years. And I just, I have a couple of questions, I know you can't answer them now, but if you could get back to me, that'd be great. Would these services be open to, like, the parents of the students at all in any kind of way? Can students reach out without their parents, like, on their own? Is that something that they can do? And I also, I mean, I think it's great that they're offering the five sessions for employees and their students, or I'm sorry, and their family members, and then doing a referral. But a couple of questions on that is, now, if they get, if they, if you have, like, if they have a child who then seek, goes to this counselor, and they have five sessions, and they now have a relationship with this counselor, and then to have them start all over again with a referral, that's just a concern of mine. I think that might be easier for an adult to do, but not so much, you know, a kid, a nurse student. I think that in five sessions, you probably just start to get some kind of connection. So that's a little concerning. Is there any way, I don't know if their insurance covers it, can they stick with the same counselor if chosen? Are they able, like, let's say they have a session or two, and they're not getting a connection with that particular counselor, can that be changed? Can they say, hey, this one's not working out for me, can we, you know, try a different one or something like that? Or can they, if a student calls in on their own, if they're able to, which I hope they are, would they be able to request a male or a female counselor to feel more comfortable? And let's see. Okay, so I just wanna, I'm listening, I mean, I think this is great. I'm not trying to be negative about it all. I think that this is a great thing to do, but I hope we can do more. I feel like we, we need to, we need to do more because we need to do better as far as mental health is concerned. And, you know, the recent tragedy is absolutely unfortunate and terrible, and if anything good can come out of it, I hope that schools pay more attention to this. This is not a new problem. It's, I mean, it's not a new problem. It happens everywhere. It happens actually more in prominent neighborhoods, I think, than not. So anyways, it can happen to us, and I hope it doesn't. But also too, just wondering, our, hold on, I'm sorry, read my own reading, I'm sorry. Oh, so the, also, like, with advertising of this program, would it be, like, in all of the buildings? Will it be more than just in the office or more, you know, you know, more than just the counselor giving it to them or a social worker? Like, are there gonna be, I don't know, posters, I don't know, flyers sent out, those kinds of things? And I didn't, oh, okay, I think that's it. I'm sorry, I can fix your name. Oh, I'm sorry, Sandy, 420. I wrote it down here. Do you want to write an email down here for me? I will. Please. Thanks, Sandy. I thought that's who it was, but I haven't seen it in a while. No, that's okay. I'm 100% agree with you. Any other public comments?
Hi, Charlene McFlur. I'm here to address bullying within the middle school. For my fifth grade daughter, it started with a member of the staff in the office. A place she went to go to feel safe was turned into a place that made her question if she was stupid. When she asked the secretaries for help with the phone, the secretary, while being on a call herself, said, "I hate when kids come in here and don't know how to dial a phone. Do they not see the directions?" My daughter had just fallen on the playground, covered in mud, in pain, laughed out in the hallway and teased for her coat looking like a garbage bag, being told she should throw it in the garbage by a group of girls, then being belittled by an adult member of the staff. When I attempted to remedy the situation, the secretary denied remembering doing this, never taking accountability for her actions or giving an honest and sincere apology. I met with administration and was told that they would look into it with the second secretary that was present and a witness to the account, never hearing from anyone again with a follow-up. Roughly a week later, my girl came home with a story of a boy in her class teasing her for her size, calling her fat, laughing with a friend about it, comparing her body with a horse. When the boy was forced to apologize, my daughter asked him why he did it. He explained that someone had made fun of his picture and made him feel bad, and he wanted someone else to feel bad too. Two days later, a group of three older boys in the hallway said to her, "Move fatty," as she walked by. My daughter is now afraid to go to school, awaiting another situation to feel bad about herself. In her words, "I've always felt confident, but they are making me question if I've been wrong this whole time." While I understand the importance of addressing threats and how to keep the staff and children safe, I firmly believe we need to start with mental health of all involved. Teach the importance of a healthy mind, kindness, acceptance, and for the staff, leading by example. If the adults are unable to practice basic skills of kindness, how can we expect the children of the community to? Seeing how adults behave and speak to one another on social media for school-associated pages makes it clear why the children behave the way they do. Children and adults should be free to ask questions while looking to adults or fellow students for guidance and acceptance, and most of all, understanding. If an adult is unable to ask questions or voice a concern in regards to their child's safety or wellbeing without being belittled or judged, how are we to expect our children to voice a concern? The most cruel insult on social media came from a secretary of the elementary school. She stated that the community was searching for something to complain about, another parent calling us hysterical and telling us we could keep our children home at any point and teach them ourselves, simply because we were concerned with the threats within the school and how they were being handled, when we were simply looking for clarification on the safety of our children and the staff. How can we expect our children to come to you when scared or sad when they are being hurt by the people that should listen and find resolution? I believe the school needs more classes surrounding mental health and accepting all as being equal. Maybe assemblies where the school is brought together as one to teach the importance of being kind to all, maybe circles of compliments in the classroom, teaching kids it's okay to ask for help. We all just need love and support and to be heard. Staff needs to be more aware in the hallrooms and classrooms to see and hear with their own eyes and ears to properly address the situation with discipline and guidance. Help these kids before the threats become something bigger that we can no longer ignore. And lastly, I want to recognize my girl and her bravery, her heart and her courage to stay strong and kind on her hardest days. You are beautiful, and don't you ever let anyone make you question who you are? You are perfect the way you are. Keep being you. Mama loves you, and I will always fight to protect you. Keep holding your head high. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, my name's Ashlyn Marsiell. Just really quick, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that you guys went ahead and did brought something like this to the school. I think it's really amazing for you guys to take those steps. And I kinda did have some follow-up questions from the other parent. I don't know if I missed it or not, but my main thing is, will the kids be able to reach out to a counselor anonymously? Because I think that having thoughts of hurting other kids is not something that they're gonna want to come out and tell a parent. And sometimes, obviously, parents are not always in touch with these kids who are having these feelings. Sometimes that's the reason they might have these feelings, that they don't have the love and care at home, not always. But, so I guess that's just a big thing for me, is even if it's not going through care, because I know maybe the insurance, if they can't get a ride to get there, if you guys have resources to send a counselor to the school, and mainly, I guess, just a way for the kids to reach out anonymously, even if it's just a counselor in the school. Because I don't know how that would be possible, but maybe something to think about just in general. So I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Christina Turgey. I just wanted to kinda talk to you guys about you guys looking further into your protocols, threats to the school. With the recent events that happened with our school, high school leaving on Thursday, my daughter's now in another school. I never received a phone call, email, nothing, letting me know that the high school had a threat. I was never told I could pick up my child if I wanted to. I had to find out from Facebook, from another parent, not from the school itself. That's wrong. You guys need to work on your communication with our parents. I was worried about every single child in this school this trip that day and the next day. I'm glad we did not have school, I'm glad teachers banded together to keep us from being in school, along with parents. Because there's no reason our other two schools should have been in class the day that this school had a threat. We are all on the same campus. If anything happened here, it could have happened at the middle school or the elementary school. I think we really need to take a deep dive on mental health. The last few years, children have been through a lot. I wanna read a few phrases that I want you to really let sink into your heads. "I am dumb. I am stupid. I am terrible at this. I can't do this. I will never understand this. I will never pass. I miss my friends. I miss school. I can't breathe in these masks. I'm scared to sneeze, cough, or complain about a stomach ache. I'm a failure. I hate myself for being so stupid." Those phrases were from my eight-year-old child. No child should ever feel like that. And I hope you guys understand that it's hurtful to hear a child of any age say something like that. And I am thankful that you are here and are here to help our kids through these tough times because they need all the help they can get. That's, I'm saying it wrong, I'm sorry.
Thank you. We know other, further public comments. We are gonna move on to our superintendent legislative update.
I am gonna start with the legislative update. As I said to the board, the plan is for House to be working into the night tomorrow and taking action on several legislative items, which concerns me as we know what happens during the, prior to the Christmas holiday, the legislators haven't always made the best decisions. Last Thursday, House Bill Plan to vote on a legislation that would severely impact the School Aid Fund. It's House Bill 4981. They did not take a vote on it last week, but they are expected to look at it this week. Basically, they would increase the lottery commission to retailers, which would reduce the lottery money going to the School Aid Fund. Again, while they didn't vote on it last week, it's likely to come up again. Again, every dollar that was promised for the lottery should be going to the School Aid Fund. Another, the House is acting on other supplemental language, supplemental bills that were received as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. We talked a little bit about it and then talked about the education impact. They began looking at how they're going to spend the nearly $6 billion Michigan has received through the AARPA, American Rescue Plan Act. They looked at House Bill 5523, which is looking at early treatment supplemental, which would fund the Department of Health and Human Service.
We know other further public comments. We are going to move on to our superintendent legislative update.
I am going to start with the legislative update. As I said to the board, the plan is for House is to be working into the night tomorrow. And taking action on several legislative items, which concerns me as we know what happens during the prior to the Christmas holiday. The legislators haven't always made the best decisions. Last Thursday, House Bill planned to vote on a legislation that would severely impact the school aid fund. It's House Bill 4981. They did not take a vote on it last week, but they are expected to look at it this week. Basically, they would increase the lottery commission to retailers, which would reduce the lottery money going to the school aid fund. Again, while they didn't vote on it last week, it's likely to come up again. Again, every dollar that was promised for the lottery should be going to the school aid fund. Another, the House is acting on other supplemental language, supplemental bills that were received as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. We talked a little bit about it and then talked about the education impact. They began looking at how they're going to spend the nearly $6 billion Michigan has received through the A R P A, American Rescue Plan Act. They looked at House Bill 5523, which is looking at early treatment supplemental, which would fund the Department of Health and Human Services for programs such as monoclonal treatments, healthcare staffing, and other things to create COVID early treatment sites around the state. The only education-related item in this PAC is about $300 million in federal funds for the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to purchase COVID tests for schools. You've seen the headlines in the past week, legislators have been sitting on this money. Part of it is the state is obligated to provide this money for the purposes of screening and testing activities to facilitate the reopening in safe schools. When Congress originally appropriated this money, it was intended to be used this current school year. We are watching that very closely, how our requirements may be with this allocation. In the most current form, House Bill 5523 has the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators, ISDs, distributing tests and specs based on head counts to eligible schools to get them to maintain reopening and that testing. Again, there are, there's a lot of questions regarding it, so it's one that we will be watching. As of this morning, the House bill had not been released, so we can't really keep up to date on the bill as it becomes available as you watch on the website. We are also keeping a close eye on the Senate's proposal, which is Senate Bill 753 and Senate Bill 755. These were passed by the House as a shell bill, which basically means that both sides agree to the line and they just insert a dollar value in it. So we are watching those two bills very closely. The Senate Education Committee last week took on education that addressing the substitute shortage. House Bill 4293 and House Bill 4294 were introduced earlier this year. If you recall, I remember I talked about this with the board. But House Bill 4293 would allow districts to employ individuals as substitutes without certificate or permit and who do not meet the requirements of substitute teachers. The only requirement with these employees would have to be already employed in the district. Basically, what they're saying is if there is an employee in this district who is an employee at the district, they can now be placed in substitutes. So you're talking to anybody who's an employee, as long as they have a high school diploma or equivalency. There are some stipulations that if the employee's current salary is less than a substitute, they must be making the substitute salary. If their substitute salary is less than their current salary, then they make the higher wages. So we are looking at that bill. They're trying to address the shortage. I don't know if this is the best way, because you may not have the right people in a classroom. Teaching is not easy. Substitute teaching is not easy. The current bill in its form would be in effect until June 30th of 2022. So again, this is what I'm personally watching over the next couple of nights when the Senate and House often do late-night sessions. House Bill 4293 addresses proposed changes to the collective bargaining under para. Basically, this is saying that it would remove the language, anything pertaining to if you're in a reform or redesign school, one of those schools are identified on the state list. It removes collective bargaining rights of employee or bargaining units. And that they would be placed under a chief executive officer. The second would remove language pertaining to public school bargaining rights. If they have to, they have to choose one of the four models, where before you negotiate that and you work with the laborer, this is removing that. So not that this is affecting us directly, but as the state creates their list of schools and they're sometimes arbitrary, it is something we are watching. Our only hope is they can go on the holiday break very soon with no action. Just to give an update on athletics, our next board meeting, I don't believe, but will be our organizational meeting. So some of the events coming up at athletics is we have tonight, the bowling was played at home with Strikers. There's a lot of home and away games scheduled. I'd encourage everybody to visit the website for the dates and times. The 21st, we have boys JV and varsity basketball at home against Anchor Bay. On January 4th, after the New Year, we have girls JV and varsity basketball at home against North Branch. The 6th, JV and girls varsity basketball at home against Elma. And then the 11th, excuse me, January 7th, which is a Friday, we have Richmond Invitational, which I believe there's about 25 teams coming. It's a huge event that we'll be hosting on January 7th. Hats off to our head cooks and cooks. I mentioned to you what we talked about in about their meals in September. The October meal count for food service is averaging about 871 more breakfasts in October and 809 more lunches in October. And to give you a perspective, during the month of November, the food service staff served 21,380 meals. 773 of those were students who chose the holiday turkey meal prior to Thanksgiving. That's basically almost one in every two kids that are choosing to eat lunch. These ladies and gentlemen are, they do an outstanding job and they do it with a smile every day. Again, one of the most proud about this group is they are, they know the kids. When those kids walk through the line, they ask about them and they create that connection. So hats off to them because that is a lot of work. Building news, National Junior Honor Society and the National Honor Society helped Lee Elementary School Santa shop. This past, this past week it was. Kudos to the PTO. They gave every child $7 to shop at the Santa shop so that nobody was left out. Everybody had an opportunity and our National Honor Society students helped with that. Preschool is planning a virtual Christmas program. I don't have the date and time. I forgot to write that down, so I apologize. But it will be going home with the preschool staff or their students, so family members and guests will be able to log in. Last Wednesday, the middle school and high school held their holiday band concert. If you had an opportunity to go, it was truly amazing. Thank you, Mrs. Schapp and the students. They did an outstanding job. One of the statements Mrs. Schapp made at the concert was, it's been 650 days since our students had their last in-person concert. I went up to her after the concert and I thanked her for her efforts and what she did because it's remarkable what a seventh grader does in band all the way up to 12th grader. And also just to begin bringing back normalcy to our community, they did an outstanding job. This week's concert is the choir concert. It's Thursday the 16th. At both concerts, you'll be able to see the art show exhibit. If you get a minute, check out the lobby. If you come to the concert, please do. I am always amazed at the artwork and the talented artists that we have here. It's just unbelievable. Mrs. Caganek, she did an outstanding job and the students. Kudos to the RMS NHS. They were featured in the Voice newspaper for their rake and run. And it was good to see, you know, a nice article written about our students given back to the community. If you didn't get a chance to read the article, I encourage you to search the web or to go to the Voice newspaper. It's a really nice article. This past Saturday, the student council at Richmond High School, along with our transportation department, held a Stuff a Bus campaign. It was at the Tractor Supply Company or TSC in the old Keemer parking lot, which they collected non-perishable foods and canned goods. I wasn't able to attend this event, but I was able to look at the photos because it was a partnership for the Richmond Lions Club. And they were unloading and sorting the food at the Richmond Lennox EMS and they did very well. So kudos to that staff. Mrs. Clausen and the student council for coordinating this event. It started last year when we couldn't do stuff because of the COVID restrictions. So we started last year and it was actually a great success. This week is Spirit Week at the high school. Polar Express theme is Monday. Wear your holiday pajamas. Tuesday is Elf Day, red and green or both. Wednesday is Winter Wonderland, where white, light blue or silver. Thursday is Holiday Day Accessories, reindeer antlers, Rudolph nose, holiday jewelry. And Friday is the New Year's Eve celebration, wearing silver, black and gold. This past week, we did an Hour of Code. Richmond participated in an international event called the Hour of Code. This takes place during the Computer Science Education Week, which runs from December 6th through 12th. As you know, Ms. Era is very excited when it comes to curriculum stuff, and so this is one. So I'm going to defer for a few minutes to her to talk about the Hour of Code, because she was like a kid in the candy store last week.
I was just so excited about it, but yeah. Richmond proudly participated in the Hour of Code. It's an international event. It's actually the largest learning event in history. We got to actually register as a site that is going to host an event. It does take place during Computer Science Education Week. The Hour of Code is a one-hour coding challenge to give students a fun first introduction to computer science and has become a global learning event, celebration and awareness event. Students participated doing age-appropriate computer coding activities from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. So thank you to the building administration, teachers and students for participating and making this such a success and to prove that computer science is for everyone. Thank you.
All right. Can you give us a couple of examples? The kindergarten one that they built the code?
Kindergarten was great because they're, you know, so they actually had the whole whiteboard up or the smart screen up. And they had the kids down at the carpet and they actually got to do a program where they got to program like a slop to be able to do some dance moves. And so they would get to sit there in their pod and they would raise a hand up where the code should go. So they'd move the computer code and then of course the slop would make a dance move and they would cheer and cheer and then they would sit back down. Okay, now where is it going to go next? So all the way from kindergarten all the way to our 12th graders being able to do like Python learning and pretty advanced stuff at our high school level. And I'd like to give a shout out, obviously, we have Mr. Suits, one of the location specialists who helped run the event here for the fourth, fifth and Lee Elementary. So we actually had a lot, the technology teacher too, Nicole Welter, she was able to be a site leader for this. And it was just really a fantastic event that everybody dropped everything, decoded and it was very wonderful.
PE?
PE, yes. Oh my gosh, that was actually hilarious. So you go into the gym and they had their laptops all separated and then you would see the kids do jumping jacks, like five jumping jacks. And then they would sit back down and they would code something. And then you saw them go up and then they would do, you know, five push-ups. Here we go. And then they would sit down, they would code and they would make, you know. So everybody, every single person in the district coded for that hour.
And we've shared it before, this is one of our moves to get more formalized computer science courses in the high school. And this is to get the interest and excitement into coding in that aspect. I want to thank Mrs. Fogum, our transportation director. She was able to arrange for Richmond Community Schools to join 13 other districts to journey to Oxford High School to pay respects for the victims and their families and the impact of that tragic day on November 30th. There's an article that was put out by Fox News and it sponsored a 13 district, a show called "School Buses From 13 Districts Drive By To Oxford to Honor Them." Basically, they did a procession when they got there. They acknowledged the tragedy that was there. They left a message from Richmond Community Schools. And visually, it's a small display of what the Richmond support has been for that community. And it speaks volumes to the number of what we're all feeling, as well as the prayers that we're sending those families and victims. The, in your board packet, you will see a communicator. This will be going out to families. This coming between Christmas and New Year's. We did a little different this year. The front and the back page were from the board office. And then each page, the first page talks about curriculum and assessment with Ms. Era, Ms. Lashbrook and their team. And then they have the early childhood, did a profile in each grade. Grade school did one. There's a sports. To give the community an update of what's been going on in Richmond, this will go to every household in the community within the zip codes. And again, it will go out between Christmas and New Year's. The last couple of days and actually weeks have been very challenging for students and school personnel and parents. You know, I said in a letter recently, I said, I'm beating my own nerves regarding the tragedy at Oxford and the subsequent threats we've been dealing with as school districts. Whether they're credible or not has led to a roller coaster of emotions. You know, right now, the unknown seems more fearful now than it has ever been. But I do want to take a minute to thank the staff in Richmond for their dedication and caring for students with all incidences. Their first response is to make sure students are safe. In an unknown, in an environment where the information we're receiving is often changing, often trying to figure out whether it's credible or not, et cetera. You know, I personally take pride in the decisions that we've made to protect our kids and staff. We're not perfect. We are learning. We're looking at, I don't know if that parent's still here about communication. We're learning what went wrong. We've been debriefing after almost every incident with the staff saying, you know, the administrative team and so forth. And I mentioned, I think it was to Margaret when she was talking about it, she stopped in and asked how we were all doing. And I said, you know, after the high school was released early, I came into this room to speak to the high school staff. And there are some high school staff who are very, they don't show their emotions. I mean, they're strong-willed people and there was a couple of staff members that were visibly upset, visibly disturbed. But they didn't show it during the time of that crisis. And there was one staff member in particular that has hit home with me personally. Just because of, this person has always been a rock, a strength. And I knew this, this challenged all of us in our belief in why we're in education and what we're doing and our purpose in education. You know, I shared that thought with Mrs. Ranger afterwards. I went to each of the buildings to try to see how they were doing. Just from a school, the staff perspective. So I do appreciate the staff and what they've done because they do put kids' interests and their safety first and foremost. You know, I just want to remind everybody, it only takes one person to say something to prevent something from happening. And in all the events that we've dealt with, the two probably most serious in the letters that I've sent out have been in response to someone speaking up and saying something in that courageous effort. Over the last two weeks, with the support of the police department, you know, I say my team because there's a large team, has investigated many false statements, rumors spread. But every single one of them has been investigated, looked into. Whether the call comes at 11 o'clock at night from a parent who had my cell phone because it was on the email to staff members reporting if they see something suspicious or students. I want to assure this board and any listener in the audience that any student that makes a threat to this district will first and foremost be suspended or removed from this district. And if those threats are credible, my recommendation to this board will be an expulsion. We, no student should ever have to fear coming to school and the safety of everybody here is my highest priority. The Richmond police are taking threats very seriously. In a recent meeting that I was with with McComb County Prosecutor, they've indicated they are taking these threats seriously. In fact, just today, I was on the phone with prosecutor's office and a second Richmond student will be charged for making these threats that the parents were notified. They are taking this seriously. I have requested personally to be part of the pre-trial hearings as a district representative. It is not, it is not okay to make any threats jokingly or serious. And most of our threats, actually all of our threats have, something could have happened if they were really serious what they wanted to do. And we have kids out there who are passing and forwarding social media. They're changing it. They're putting school names in it. We are spending hours, and I'm not complaining because we will spend the hours to investigate those, to make sure that everybody is safe. And I don't know if that parent is still here. You know, I made the decision with my team after consulting to keep elementary and middle school in school. To send kids home early, high school kids have the ability to watch themselves. But to release the middle school with fourth graders, it was ultimately my decision and I own that for the safety of kids. They were safer here and we did allow parents and we had a system in place. It was somewhat archaic because there was a lot of parents that came from the perspective signing them out. But the staff were making sure those kids are safe and that was our first priority. I'm confident in our protocols, though we will learn, we will improve, we will make changes. We're finding information about our systems, talking from power school to school messenger and working things out. But again, I can't ask parents enough to please speak to your children. If they don't say anything to a staff member here or an adult, say something and report it to the police, if anything. There's an okay to say line. There's a phone number. That system that the state did put in place does work. We get calls and notifications immediately when that call is there. They may call the police directly if it's that serious of a threat to get the police involved. The challenge that we are facing is the misinformation that's spread. People assuming things that- People assuming things that are out there or speculating, it's almost like the game telephone. You say something, something adds something, adds something, adds them and actually you know it's this crisis that happened and it really didn't. And I'm not blaming anybody because I'm a parent. If I got pieces of information from my own child, my anxiety level and nervousness for my own child is up there. I get calls from, my daughter goes to Alma and I get those calls. They were in lockdown several months ago. You know, you're two hours away, as Mr. Trent said, about two, two and a half hours away. Not a whole lot I do, but I do, I do have a trust and faith in the institution and I can say wholeheartedly without any doubt that we may not be perfect, but I can tell you one thing we are, is this staff will protect every kid to the nth degree. It's a scary world that we live in, but I am very proud of what we did and how we responded. And I'm trying to keep the communication open with parents. Please recognize there are some times I can't say things for student privacy laws, FERPA violation. However, if it's released by the police, then I can follow up with police state. So it might be some timing issues that I have to do because just the way the system operates and so forth. The last thing, last two things I want to say is we were required to submit the student data for our new NWA scores for math and reading for grades three through eight. And I think this is important for everybody to know is our district was one of many in McComb County that took the position that we will not release student information to a third-party company that the state is dealing with. And we have fought this as a collective group in the county. In fact, we are ready to give them the aggregate, which basically says, here's third grade, here's the total third grade, no student names on it. We were ready, Renee and I, one of us was going to drive up to Lansing and have it put on a flash drive because we're required to give them aggregate, but they want us to submit it through systems that release student information to a third party and we are refusing. The state did acknowledge that they do not have the right to ask us for that information. So we did send the aggregate data via a portal through the state because they didn't want the jump drive. But we are adamantly opposed to sending any information about our students to the state, especially when they're dealing with third-party vendors. So I just want the board to know that we took that position. The risk of not doing this or if we were, if we were found was with our NWA, there's about a $10 per pupil cost that we would, I think it's $12, it might be, I can't remember the exact number. But I took the risk that I was going to give up that money because I am not releasing student information to anybody who doesn't need to have that information. I strongly believe that information should be between the teacher, the parent and the principal. That's who needs that information. State uses this information to target families, is, can be sold to third parties who want to target an open charter school. I will not release it. So on behalf of the district, I did make that position. They did come back and say they will not, not give us the money for that, so we won't be losing dollars, but we did do that and we took that position among, McComb County, there are only 19 districts in the state who refuse to do it and all 19 of those are in McComb County. So when you talk about the collective groups that we do with our legislative liaison, the county school board, this is all part of it, is we, we are advocates for our district and our kids and our families and we're not giving them information they have no reason or right really to know. So I just wanted the board to, you know, we did, I did take that position. We will not be losing funding, so we'll be applying for that reimbursement. And finally, the last thing I'd like to say to everybody, may the holiday season end the present year on a cheerful note and make way for a fresh, brighter new year. From my house to yours, I wish each of you here in Hubble City, United States a very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season and please stay safe.
Items of interest from the board. Margaret?
I have two things. I want to take a moment to recognize Grant Collins, who was a parent heavily involved with our band boosters. Band booster president passed away a couple of weeks ago, I think it was. Just to keep him and his daughters and the rest of his family in your prayers. I didn't know Mr. Collins personally, but I sure felt like it because every single band thing that I went to, he was there and was so involved and Mrs. Schapp just signed his praises on what a tremendous man he was and what he did for our kids in the band. So keep, keep his family in your prayers. Saturday night, we had our annual ugly sweater party for Sandy's kids at a hotel. We raised $2,700 for Sandy's kids. Didn't have our usual big crowd that we normally do for a lot of different reasons, but it was really fun and everybody out there, people that attended, people that gave us gift baskets or donations, all the money goes back to our Richmond kids and their families and Sandy Fortuna there, Kyle, Brian with their baskets and their help. It just, just a good feeling to be with a bunch of people. Some people you don't know who they are, but they're, they're there to support our kids. It was a good event.
Scott?
Thank you.
Kyle?
Just Merry Christmas to everyone. Hopefully, everybody has a safe and happy holiday season. We can get back in January and get after it.
Thank you. Angela?
Just to wish everybody to enjoy the break and the time off and enjoy their holidays with their family.
I'd like to acknowledge Teresa Ranger because last week, she was what, the teacher of the week nominated by WNIC. We had a parent who sent a letter in and she won and did they come out to the building or did they? I know we had a picture of her in your certificate, so congratulations. While we're on break, I'm asking that the board take a look at our comments from our survey and look at any of the concerns and see if there's any possible solutions so that when we have our organizational meeting in January, that we might make some suggestions to Mr. Walensley about something that might be feasibly we can implement. And finally, I too want to wish all of our students and our families a wonderful holiday and a happy new year and be safe.
Okay. Our next items is our action items.
Sorry.
No. Okay. We're going to start off, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the middle school and the high school weight equipment.
Move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract to pro-maximal for middle school bicycle fitness slash weight room equipment for an amount not to exceed $93,992.60 as outlined in the attached documentation. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders and the projects that are within the band budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bands approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bans year is one is available.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay. This will be a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
And Deb, aye. Motion carries. Okay. I am now looking for a motion for the approval of an overnight extended student trip.
Move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the wrestling programs overnight slash extended student trip to Alma High School on January 14 and 15, 2022 as presented at the December 13, 2021 Board of Education meeting and outlined in the attached documentation.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the resolution for our summer tax collection.
Move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and pose a summer property tax levy to collect all school property taxes in a city or township in which this district is located as outlined in the attached resolution.
Support? I have a support.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just quickly, this is something we do every year. We collect all of our taxes for school in the summer. It's just when we got to notify the cities and towns that we want them in the summer. It's something that's been done.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of our evaluation for our superintendent.
Move to approve the superintendent's overall evaluation as effective, represented a consensus of the board as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Yes. What consensus says effective, and I will vote with the consensus that our superintendent is highly effective, should have been evaluated that way. He does a tremendous job. We are very lucky to have him in this school district. Great things happen because of his leadership.
I just want to comment that, I just want to thank Brian for everything that he does for the district and for our students here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And looking for a motion for the approval of our Ninth Amendment of the contract for the superintendent.
Move to approve the Ninth Amendment of contract superintendent as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Seeing there is no other business, the board will adjourn at 9:21.